All right, if everybody's ready then we will call December 12th, 2019, Coffin County Board of Education Work Session to Order. And Dr. Banks will give our indication, please.
Thank you. Let us pray. Father God, thank you for this day. Thank you for your Son, Jesus Christ. Thank you for this opportunity to come together. Thank you, Father God, for your Holy Spirit, our conferent and our keeper. We thank you, Father God, for abiding in us and allowing us to abide in you so that we can continue to bear much fruit. I ask tonight, Father God, that you will just touch our hearts, touch our mindset. Let us discuss things that's pertinent to our school system to impact the lives of our children. And I ask, Father God, during this Christmas season, that you would touch all of your children, those that are being able to do great things, those that might be a little misguided along the way. I pray that what we do here to educate our children will help them be more promising to the future that they have and let them know that the wages of sin is dead, but the gift of God is eternal life. And I pray that we all get that prize one day at the conclusion of the race. And I ask tonight, Father God, that whatever we discuss, let us be about our Father's business. And I ask that you touch all of our board members, our superintendent, everyone in your cabinet, all certified and classified staff, and let us do good things as we progress to the end of this 2019 year and we hope to bring in goodness in 2020. This is our prayer and amen. Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit, in Jesus' most precious name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Dr. Banks. Thank you. Everybody's had time to look over the agenda. Do you have any amendments to the agenda? I believe we set the agenda as presented. Second.
Setting.
On favor. Dr. Lewis? Thank you. Welcome, board members. Appreciate you being here tonight and good to have everybody back together again, all of our administrators here and team members here who are part of what we do to operate Coffin County School. Thank you. On the agenda tonight, we have minutes from our last month's meeting. If you want to take a moment to review those minutes. If there's any amendments or changes that need to be made, let me know. If it pleases, the board will place this on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. Monthly financial report. We've got four reports here. I'll go through each one of them. You'll see the monthly report July 1, 19 through November 30, 19. End of month fund equity is $14,561,028.57. Any questions about that document? There's no questions. The next report is the comparison. Gives us the comparison of this month, November over last year, November going back all the way to FY '17. As you can see, we're pretty well tracking in line where we've been previous years. Any comments or questions about that report? I can jump out at anybody. We're down a little bit on the...
When I say down, I don't mean down. I mean on the spread that we've...
Yeah.
Usually it's been around $3 million month-to-month on that same line, you know, from earlier. It's...I didn't know if that was in traditional spending or revenue hadn't come in or...
Revenue has not come in aggressively as last year, so we talked with the tax collector's office and they've not been receiving at the rate they were last year. So that's a spread that you sit there and look at anyway. You've got a lot of variation between year-to-year how it comes in. That's about the same spread as 2017, '18, but it's off of '18, '19, and '16, '17. I guess it is. I mean, people get their stuff paid at a certain time. We did have the eggs and issues this morning and House Member Perkel and Loricia and Senator Tyler Harper talked to us about the state of the state affairs and they cited a downturn in revenue at the state level. So that was most of their discussion this time was the state downturn in revenues. Hopefully, we don't see that at the local level. This is our financials for this month, this comparison report. If there's no questions, we'll move to the next report. The detail, and you'll see that revenue not coming in at its high rate on this report. Ms. Yon, do you have anything to add to this?
The TAVT has been strong this year as compared to last year.
That was interesting at the discussion we had today. At the state level, TAVT is actually flat in some areas and negative in some areas. So we're blessed with...
Yeah. People are buying cars here. It's a good thing. All right. In the SPOS report, you'll see this month's revenue was strong, $518,403.54 in November. So our local economy seems to be revving up as compared to last year and the year before. Any questions about the SPOS report? All right, if there's no changes that need to be made to the financials, then we'll include those on the consent agenda for the regular meeting. District determination. Got a very positive letter from the Department of Education a couple of weeks ago and wanted to share the letter with the board members and give Dr. Tanya Johnson a chance to come up and share this good news. And one of the attachments, you'll see the letter that was directed to me as superintendent, citing the progress that our special education department has made. And so I just wanted to have Dr. Johnson come and present this good news to the board. There's actually two items kind of back-to-back, so we can just talk through both of them with you, Dr. Johnson. But welcome and appreciate you being here and sharing this good news with the board.
Each year, the Individuals with Disabilities Education Act requires that each state review the data for each school system and whether or not they need requirements for IDA principal. And there are, after reviewing the data, we either need requirements, need assistance, or need intervention. And you'll see below the different areas that are assessed. They look at rates of suspension and expulsion, disproportionality, evaluations, transition, and a few other areas there. And the Division has reviewed the information for Coffin County School System, which indicates for the '18, '19 school year, and has made the FY '20 determination that Coffin County meets all areas at 95%. And we would just like to applaud our teachers, staff, parents, and students for the hard work that they have done in helping the district meet this determination.
Well, thank you, Dr. Johnson. It takes everybody, all your teachers, referral coordinators, everybody, principals. So let's give our special education department a round of applause. And the big deal behind it is if we don't comply with these things, then there are negative consequences that can come to us because of that. I know you went with us about four, five, six years ago when we had to go through the whole compliance review piece and it was rather discomforting to have to do that. And it can cause resources to be shifted that we can use in common sense ways to help young people. And when you get put on those lists, if you will, sometimes it prohibits us from doing the good work that we like to do, the way we think it needs to be done. So thank you, Dr. Johnson, for ensuring that we were compliant and had 95% compliance. And what's your next report?
Our next report is our annual graduation rate. The Georgia Department of Education for the FY '19 annual event report recently indicated that 90% of Coffin County students with disabilities graduated. And 75% of Coffin County students with disabilities graduated within four years. And we'd just like to say that, you know, we have had an increase over the past several years and we have a graph to indicate where we have come from. So we'd just like to applaud our teachers again for the hard work that they have done in helping us to achieve this rating. We did also celebrate with our teachers last month in having a graduation celebration. And we, you know, included our teachers and staff in this celebration just in honor of this celebration. So we honored them by giving them a keychain with a graduation passel. And we would also like to share this with each and every one of you as well to remember our achievement.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
And this was one of those too. I also got this glowing email from the State Department about the accomplishments of our special ed students and special ed department. And I just wanted to make sure that the board got to enjoy this recognition also and share in our appreciation for what they do, so. She did bring them for everybody.
I don't have a problem with that.
How about that? Just enough.
All right. Well, thank you, Ms. Johnson. Dr. Johnson, do you have anything else to add?
I think that'll be all. Thank you all so much.
Our next item on the agenda is out-of-state travel. I was called a couple of days ago about a out-of-state travel. The football team has been invited to the Gator Bowl and the coach called me yesterday and shared with me that they've been invited to the Gator Bowl and they've got a chance to take the whole team. And I asked if we could allow them to go. And so this being an out-of-state trip, even though it's just right across the state line in Jacksonville, it required board approval. There'd be no cost to the school system for this. They'll pay for the gas and such as that. We'll bill that right before for that. But it does require board approval for them to be able to go out of state. If it's okay with the board, we'd like to include that on the consent agenda at the regular meeting. Couple of questions? Yes, sir. How long you know about it? Well, I was told yesterday about it. Yes, sir. And I think we just now given... Is anybody else aware of it for tonight?
Where did you get this from?
I found out about it yesterday, and so I'm not sure what they found. I think they found out about it within a couple of days. For the record, I don't like last minute. I know. Yes, sir.
Well, here's my thing. I don't have a problem with it. But they're leaving January 2nd. We had a board meeting before they left. We can approve and let them go. But like he just said, it's something that just came up. Technically, if this came up next week, we don't have another board meeting. These kids can't go on that trip. And I know I've discussed about that before. I understand that there are some legalities involved with the, we need to approve out-of-state travel. But I still think we need a better way of being able to, I mean, because things do come up and, you know, sometimes between when we have board meetings that we can...I just don't see why we've got to prove every trip Jacksonville, Georgia that people can go around all they want. And I understand it's across the state line, but it just gets into, we've had several instances where things come up that didn't quite fall in the rules. I just don't see why we have to prove everything. I don't know why we can't have a mileage. If you're going over a certain amount of miles, you have to give approval. But Jacksonville is a lot quicker than going to that.
Yes, sir. We had that discussion with our administration and after we tossed it around, the pros and cons, we just felt like that this process does allow there to be some pretty tight controls on out-of-state travel and...
I understand that. What's the difference between out-of-state mileage? If you said if you're going over, you know, 90 miles, you have to have approval. But, you know, they don't think, we don't have to have approval to go to the aquarium in Atlanta, but they've got to get approval to go to the zoo in Jacksonville. It don't make sense. I mean, you know what I'm saying? I understand having, you know, a little say over that, but I would rather go with a mileage deal. If they're going so far away from our campus, they need approval. But if that makes sense, they can drive four hours and not have to get approval, but if they get two hours, they've got to get approval, is all I'm saying.
That makes sense. It makes a lot of sense.
Because what I'm saying is you have a lot of little things come up close to home that, you know, like that, that, you know, you don't have a lot of stuff come up, oh, we just got invited to go to Kentucky or something, you know? I mean, it's gonna be stuff around here, but if it's in Jacksonville, they can't go because we don't have a board meeting between when they got invited and when they want to go.
And then the thing is, you know, we had anticipated them being in the, playing in championship game, which is Friday. So naturally, they wouldn't have invited us if we were playing this Friday. So it had to be something that was last minute because we just lost out. And, you know, so, you know, I don't look at it that they had months of this in advance because we had already anticipated they're playing in the championship game on this Friday.
And I'm not even talking about this. I'm just talking about it in general. I know we had a baseball thing last year, I think, that had been planned and it was out loud. Didn't have to have approval for it. Everything was fine. And, you know, a month before the tournament, they changed it to Alabama. All of a sudden, you got scrambling, I hope we can get on there and get, you know, I mean, you know, there's some things, I just, anyway. I think it's something we need to talk about in retreat. Is there any way we can do that better?
Certainly.
Because I would hate, like I say, if this came up next week, they can't go. Even though they got three weeks before the thing, they can't go because we don't have another board meeting.
Yeah.
We're not paying for it anyway.
I'm just talking about the fact they have to get approval or they can't go. We need to have a way that we can, you know, I mean, there's some things that don't come up.
They called out a call meeting.
Well, we had one one time, what was the situation with basketball where something got dropped and it, you know, they didn't get to go. But anyway, that's...
I don't have a problem with them going. I do have a problem with the communication to us, the board dropping that out tonight. It could have been emailed yesterday or...
Yeah.
That's my thing. I don't mind them going. I just don't like stuff drop here at the last minute.
Well, that's what I'm getting at. If this has come up...
Tomorrow.
And it came up after you had come by my office yesterday so we could talk and so... Anyway, I'm not beating a horse. Now, I'm just saying, next time we have a retreat or something, that might be something we need to try to beat around and see if we can find a better way of doing that. Like I say, I do want them to have opportunities to go and do some things, not want to get caught up in, you know...
I think the point is there's some things that require board action or like, kind of scratch your head that can't that be handled administratively.
If they're going to Jacksonville...
You know, I could understand if you were coming to us asking us to fund something, asking us to make, you know, but it's...
We'll certainly prepare it as an item for discussion, as a retreat, come back and look at it. Because you're right, if this had not, if we had not had this meeting...
That's what I'm saying. If this comes, if they get invited next week, you got 120 kids that can't go to, you know, something they're going to go to.
That's right.
We had, like you said, we could have called meeting and had a call meeting.
Yeah, if it had just come up before and we didn't do that, that's what I'm saying. So how are you gonna say, well, we're gonna have a call meeting for this group or, well, we didn't do it when they had this problem? Or are you gonna have a call meeting every month because, so maybe a better way of dealing with it, is all I'm saying, when we don't have these issues?
We shouldn't even have to approve this kind of stuff and we're not paying for it anyway. You know, it should be done administratively.
Well, right now, it's the policy and so if it's okay with the board, I'm gonna place that on the consent agenda.
Yeah, that's fine. I don't have a problem with that. And that's something with, you know, I know last time we talked about some of the legalities and I think Sid, I thought you said there might have been some issues there. We're talking about it right now.
Yeah. All right. Out-of-state travel policies. We've got the EEF competitive food policy. It's been discussed previously, so this is on the consent agenda to be approved. Any concerns? Any comments about that, Ms. Lewis?
We just cleaned up the language so that if the federal government changes the rules, this policy can still stand. We just ordered it so that if we were being compliant, what are the federal laws for? Because they do change periodically when administration changes at the federal level.
All right. That'll be placed on the consent agenda for approval at the board meeting. Board meeting dates. We've been discussing the meeting dates for 2020. Can you believe that? It's gonna be 2020. And are there any questions, concerns? I know that Mr. Press mentioned to me some concerns possibly about a couple of the dates.
Probably want to go in order and we can do it during discussion. Mr. Chair, you want to do it that way? Do it in discussion?
What were you asking?
Do you want to do it in order and just we, for discussion? That would be what I discuss is the amendment dates.
Okay. I'm fine with them, so if you've got something you'd like to talk about, go ahead. Do you have something?
I've got, I've just got a couple of conflicts and they're doing, they're during budget season, so on the April 16 date, we'd like to consider maybe doing that to the 23rd.
Why is that, or why do we leave that? Spring break or something?
No, it's a...
I had, actually, I've got my, but it's no big deal. I can be back the 23rd. Does the 23rd work better?
Well, I mean, it's just the date of the 16th is the Georgia School Nutrition Association show.
Yeah. You want to do, what date were you suggesting?
The next Thursday.
All right, yeah.
Open to whatever.
Yeah. Let's just change it to the 23rd. That superintendent's conference, is that, is that 22, 23? But I'll be back, especially on that Thursday, so I'll be, I'll be back for that 23rd. That's not a problem.
And then the June date, I do have a conflict on the 18th, but it's not as, not as critical, but I didn't know how much of the budget we were going to be dealing with. And we've got a pretty good spread between the May, because we've got an early May date. We've got a May 7th, and then it was gonna be almost six, seven weeks before we had another meeting. Possibly move it to the 11th.
So the June, do the June 11th? We can do whatever pleasure board is, so... What's our, Savannah's date? It is the...
Why is the...
Go ahead. It's, I think it's that 28, 29. Let me check the dates on that real quick. If we moved the June 18th to 18th because we had such a big timeframe between 7th and 18th, is that why we did that? Or is it a budget?
We'll have a budget meeting normally with, I said we're gonna have the end of May.
Because of the... It is a call meeting.
And a call meeting.
Why don't we move the 18th back to the normal date? Why don't we move it up to start date? Instead of moving it back to 11th, you got a call meeting in the month, and then all of a sudden, you got a month and a half between July.
That's the May 15th. No, I just, I just have a conflict with the 18th.
That's what I'm saying. Once you move it back to the normal month, the normal week, 25th, what do you say?
You normally try to approve some informally issues the closest possible to May 15th.
Okay, we're gonna have a call meeting at the end of May.
Well, we got May 7th.
Yeah, you're talking about the June meeting.
We're talking about June meeting. Oh, June meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't be lawyering this up. So... If you move to 25... Mr. Loric, you had to step on, you had to step on the attorney this morning at a meeting. I don't want to have to...
Yeah, we can do the 25, no problem. Yeah. So we'll just move it to the 25.
And that keeps you having a month and a half between July, because you're gonna have a, you're gonna have a May, end of May meeting, call meeting.
Yeah.
I see if it's not a burden on anybody else to move it and it's not gonna cause a conflict with the budget cycle.
No.
So that would just be it.
We do, we do the June and on the 25th.
So we're gonna have May the 1st and a call meeting at the end of May.
You got May the 7th. You have a call meeting at the end of May.
May the 7th.
And then, and then, like I say, we'll be... And then the June 25th. And June the 1st, June we got to go to the conference, so will there be plenty of opportunities if we had to call another one in or something? We had to.
So you're saying move it to the 22nd?
25th. And then you get back on schedule with your July and all that?
Spring break, so April 6th through the 10th. Can't prepare it. I don't want to drop anything.
I got it. Back at home.
I got you.
I wish, yeah.
So, Jada, would you entertain a motion to amend the...
That was it, that's it?
Yes. Amend the dates to reflect April 23rd and June 25th?
Well, it's not, you know, this is, this is still a work in progress, you know, being this is a work session and so we're not voting on it. We're just, we're just putting, putting whatever we'll put on the agenda. So the one, can we edit that during the break and the one we present?
Yes.
Asset record will reflect this.
Move them back.
So what we present at the 7:30 meeting will reflect those changes.
Which actually puts them back in the original date anyway.
So April 23rd to June 25th. Sid, do you have anything you want to add?
No.
Buddy, I...
No, that's...
There was a question on court reform at the meeting this morning and Mr. Loric had to do his, do his duty and save the meeting. It was good. He stepped in.
Good. Fast lawyers, we're good.
All right. And I was trying to pull up that day of the GSBA conference, but my computer's just spinning, so we'll try to get it down on that.
Might be on there. I can look on the hub.
All right. Next item on the agenda for the work session is the crisis alert system. We have been investigating crisis alert system, trying to nail down something that is better than what we're currently using. What we're currently using is this School Guard app. And it's something we purchased about two years ago now. And the School Guard app, while... while it's effective, we don't feel like it's as effective as, as one of these other systems, and we want to provide as safe a schools as, as we can. There's some real problems with this that we've identified, and conducting drills, and working through preparations for, for emergency situations, and so we think this, this app has outlived its purpose. And so, we've been investigating other crisis alert systems, and we put out an RFP for crisis alert systems, and we took up proposals. We had four companies that submitted proposals. We had a very lengthy process, I would call it lengthy, in fact, we had one of the requirements to submit a proposal was the vendors had to come to a pre-proposal meeting, and they had to actually come meet with us, and so we had the vendors, four vendors show up.
We actually had six for the pre-bid conference, and four submitted proposals.
All right, so we had six in the boardroom for the pre-submit conference, and we talked with them about what we were looking for, and describing the systems that we were interested in, what they can do, and so then we had four companies submit proposals, and we have vetted those proposals, we had a committee that reviewed the different, uh, programs, and so at this point, I'm recommending that we purchase Synthegix Crisis Alert System. It, uh, their proposal was really, it, it was, I think, exactly what we're looking for, and we feel like this will help us have the safest schools we possibly have. I have a presentation prepared, an overview, if you wanna go to that, Dr. Noel. Of course, we had Synthegix do a presentation here for our board, so you're familiar with the product somewhat. It's, it's a, a system that's pretty comprehensive, scroll to the next slide, you'll see there's alert badges that each, each individual will wear. Everybody in the system from maintenance to nutrition, to teachers, to paraproses, secretaries, and I, I actually put on the demo badge here, and I've had it on the lanyard all night. They'll, it'll fit right behind a regular ID, and on it there is a button, that when, this is not an actual one, but it's the same size, and feels just like it, but there's a button on there, and as they did in the demonstration.
Is that the one we tried out?
Yeah, it is.
That you have to press some times?
Vibrate, that, you press it three times, and the teacher, if they have, let's say they have two kids getting in a fight, they can mash it three times, and and the principal would get an alert, and the principal would come down to the room, and, uh, and so there's that covert alert, if you will, where they can just mash it three times and get help if they need it, if somebody's having a heart attack, if they're having a medical emergency, they can hit it three times and get somebody down to the room immediately. But then if there is, heaven forbid, a, a, a real situation that requires locking down the building, the benefit is anybody in the building that has the badge can lock the whole building down, and then in a matter of minutes. And so that's the whole idea, we've talked through this, we've talked with Chris from a security standpoint, law enforcement standpoint, with Chan from a technology standpoint, and then with our principals, we did have the presentation for our principals. The idea that anybody in the building can lock it down immediately is very valuable, of course, time is gonna be what's critical in one of those, uh, situations, that we hope never happens. Dr. Banks, there's a function that, that I know he appreciates the fact that if he's, let's say he's in Wacross at a recent meeting, and he gets called from the Sheriff Department about a threat at one of the schools, he can do a lockdown from his phone, so this system will give not only the people with the badges the ability to lock the school down, but it would give the administration that has the, the app on their phone, uh, the ability to, to lock the school down. And, and those are real issues that we face more often than, than we'd like to have face, so, uh, those are some of the advantages with the badge, the, the alert strobes, without, throughout the building, there will be strobe lights that are placed, and in the event that you do a lockdown, uh, the red strobe light comes on, that means it is a real lockdown, they need to shut the doors, lock it down. There will be a yellow strobe, if it's a, just a soft lockdown, they would know that there's not actually, heaven forbid, a shooter, but there is, you know, a reason to, to lock your classroom door and to be on, on, on call. So the strobes are throughout the building, and the benefit of the strobes also, if there is a, uh, visitor coming on campus, we've talked with the technicians and with the maintenance staff, if they're coming on the campus, if we don't have that strobe going off, they might walk right into an emergency, not even know it. And so with the strobe lights, that'll indicate there's something going on on the campus, so, and we have people, I see social services back there, they, they are in and out of buildings, and they need to know, if they see the red lights going off, they know not to enter that building, so, uh, the strobes and then the alert hubs, they'll place those hubs in various parts of the building to make sure the system works, and then they've got the gateway that sits on the, on the server system in each building that monitors it, so. Next slide, then you've got the alert badge, once again, and we've talked about the benefits of that, and then the real-time locating, if one of these badges is, uh, depressed, if you do the eight times, lock the school down, immediately, law enforcement, Chris, Dr. Banks, they will come up on the app, and it will show them right where the alert was set off at, so they'll be able to go right to that point wherever the alert went off at, so those maps will come up on the, the users' phones that have access to the maps, and law enforcement will be able to pinpoint exactly where.
Well, that's just coming up on their, on their laptop computers in their cars.
What if one of the students, um, you know, if, if, worst case scenario, if they decide that they wanna take these badges from the teachers at gunpoint, and they set these things off, is it anything that's finger detected, um, where the children cannot set it off versus the, um, teachers?
Yeah.
Or is, you know, anybody can just set it off?
Yeah, yeah, the badge is taken and, and it is set off, and it could be set off by, by whoever mashes the button, so. But, uh, you know, authorities would be coming immediately, so, you know. But that's a good question. Campus-wide protection, if, uh, you know, this will provide campus-wide protection throughout the campus, so. We did go visit a site, Camber County, they have the system in place amongst others, and you'll see the badges I showed, that's the badges that the individuals there were wearing. One of them's from Scriven County, Scriven County Superintendent, the other one is the Camber County Superintendent, and they both showed me their badges, and, and, uh, the Scriven County Superintendent said they used it during open house, and they had two parents show up, and the parents got in altercation in the hallway at the school, and they had, they did the silent alarm, and the teacher got the law enforcement, the principal down there, broke it up, uh, right there at open house, so it actually worked right there at the beginning of the year for them, so, uh, that's, uh, the, uh, there are two alerts, there's three presses on the badge, covertly activates the principal administrative alert, and then seven presses on the badge covert, overtly activates the school lockdown and alert system. Wireless beacons that contain an LED strobe are placed throughout the building. The beacons can be placed strategically inside or even outside of the building, and then that's the control panel. And additional wireless communication boosters are placed strategically in the building. And all staff members have the ability to call for help or lock down the school immediately. I was talking with the superintendent who has, has also purchased the system and has put it in, and one of the benefits, they felt like it really empowered the teachers to know, and the staff to know, if they need help, they can get help immediately. It's just a, a comfort that the staff has, knowing they can get help immediately, so. That's the system, are there any other questions?
The only problem I have got is not with the problem, and I think we need to put it, and our, the only problem I have was the high school in Nichols where we've got, we've already, we've got what's coming up next, the audio enhancement, and we're gonna put it at the high school. They're, they're wearing the lanyards, got an alarm system on it, goes to front office, alerts, and, I mean, the only concern I've got about is paying to double up on something. Do we need that, both of those systems at, say, the high school, or do we need one of them? You know, you get just because we don't have the cameras and all that stuff in, you know, we need about it, and the point is, you know, we're, we're, we've got a lanyard, and then we've got a car, and basically do a lot of the same things, and we talked to the audio enhancement people because I was, I was thinking maybe they didn't do all of that stuff, and pretty much we couldn't find anything, for the most part, that this did, that the audio enhancement piece wouldn't do.
Well, also, audio enhancement is primarily classroom.
But it's got an alarm that will get, it's sent into the office, the cameras automatically come on and start, you know, showing them what's going on in that area, that room, whatever, I mean, it's.
But it doesn't have the beacons that go up in the hallways, and it doesn't have the school. Doesn't have the map that goes out to law enforcement.
That's what I'm asking, are we, are we doubling it up on the same thing, or are there things that this is providing us that the other one is not?
I would say the emergency or the panic button on the audio enhancement mic is a small feature that, that the whole system, that was an add-on they added later because they.
But that is why I'm buying the thing, I, I mean, the other stuff is nice, but the reason I'm buying it is because of that, to be able to, I mean, you know, we, I mean, that, that's what I like about it, is that part of it.
Right.
You know, I'm just, I, that's all I'm asking, are we, are we paying?
I'd say there's some overlap in those two systems.
And, and I thought.
What we could do is leverage that and say, okay, if you have the redundant system out there, the, the panic button on audio enhancement may be reserved for the medical ones that aren't critical to lock it down, you could designate another purpose.
And that, that's all I'm asking, is I hate to pay twice for something that, you know, to be paying for two of the things, it's the same, but, and that's all I was saying, that, that was my concern with, with being with Nichols, and here is that we've already got something along these lines, are we doubling up, or are there separate features that we need that one of them doesn't do?
You know, I, I'm pretty sure with the audio enhancement, you're gonna pay a small fee.
Audio enhancement doesn't do the law enforcement alert.
No.
It only alerts.
It doesn't have the app that goes out to the administration.
And the, and correct me if I'm wrong, but we're, this contingent, this, uh, this piece, this crisis alert piece, is, we're funding that with the security funding that the gov, governor.
Yes, sir.
Or the legislature appropriated.
Yes, sir.
So, I mean, we, we can only spend that money on security features.
Oh, I'm fine with that, I'm just, I'm just, I don't wanna pay twice for the same things, that's all I'm saying.
I, I felt like there were some significant differences in the two, I, I like the idea of our staff.
Well, that's what I thought, but when we were talking to the audio enhancement people last week, I mean, everything I asked, they were like, no, ours can do that, and I'm thinking, well, you know.
But it does not do the, the notification throughout the building, and it doesn't have the app that would notify law enforcement, those are the two big pieces.
I like the instantaneous. Yeah, I, I like the instantaneous lockdown feature on that contingent, because not trying to, based on fear, because I, I think, I think it is a very rare event, but what happened at Parkland, when staff people saw that student coming, and they knew that student. They just couldn't stop the student.
Yeah.
So, my point is, they did not have a way to alert campus-wide immediately. I think the audio enhancement piece, like, again, has that as a feature, but not as an intent, um, and we might even can develop it where it's, like, like, like you said, a medical event, or because you can, you can program the audio enhancement piece to a degree. This thing is just a press and go.
There's certain notifications it can do, but it's not integrated in, like, say, the phone system, or emergency call, or even the intercom system, it would require another level of integration to get anywhere close to what a system like Synthegix would do.
Chris, I mean, if you don't mind, do you have any thoughts on?
Yes, the Synthegix, the Synthegix part, the piece of that is, it goes far beyond, in my mind, the audio enhancement stuff. The audio enhancement's gonna be in-house, as, as we've talked about. It's not gonna do anything with law enforcement that we needed to do. It's not gonna show us, it's not gonna give us, uh, real-time video footage of when we're driving, we can actually see what the guy looks like, what kind of gun he's got, the old nine yards in our cars going there. There, there's just a lot, it won't have the, and I'm sure with this piece.
This right here is gonna have that?
It should, yes, we've talked about that.
Or the camera.
It won't, it won't do that.
It won't talk.
One of them would.
One of them probably didn't have that.
Okay, what's my first name, I didn't know it did that.
And, and it also has audio alerts throughout the hall.
What this will do is it will show law enforcement, our own security, law enforcement administration, where the alert was triggered, it will pop up that location on a map, and we are standardizing our camera system right now to one platform, as opposed to the three or four we got there now, and those same people will have access to that central camera, so within seconds, they can see it's ceiling at middle school, and they can pop the camera map up and look at cameras.
Now, the audio enhancement, when you mash that panic button, those cameras, that room will start filming, and it goes to the front office, but then they would have to turn around and lock it down or call off.
And, and, and to be honest, we, Adam, most of these active shooters are done within five minutes, and that, that's the piece that's so important.
And that's what I'm getting to, that's what I wanna know, yeah, it's worth it, because by the time I had to press this button and they did this.
Well, and I'll, and I'll give you, for instance, we had a lockdown, it might have been the last school year, and, and I was already in place, it was the end of the last school year, that we needed to lock down one of our elementary schools. Well, I ended up in turn having to call Dr. Banks, and then he had to call the principal, she wasn't on the site, she was up here at a meeting, so then I had to run down to the assistant principal. All that took time, but we don't really need to take, so this just cleans all of that up.
And, and that's the answer I'm looking for, that's what I wanted.
If I'm walking outside of a school, if I go visit the high school, and I'm close to the building, and I see somebody walking with a gun, I can lock that building down immediately. If a maintenance guy is going to a school, if he's going to Eastside, and see somebody walking, he'll be able to lock it down immediately.
I'm good, that's what I wanted here.
Yes, sir. All right. Any other questions, and this is a big purchase, so I think this is good, good conversation.
Just to get, just for the questions, this is system-wide?
Assist every school and the board office, and the only, the local money that will be used, uh, the grant from the state will cover the purchase of the system, all right? The board office, we are gonna put the system in here, and that cost is $12,500, so that, we will use local splosh for that, to put it in here at the board office, but otherwise, the schools will be paid for using the grant money.
That doesn't include a lot of the wire grass facility, that, that's not included?
Yes, we will do wire grass career cabin, career cabin.
Our portion of that, okay.
And the annual, the recurring cost, because that, that money will cover the installation, the recurring cost will be just a little bit more than what we're currently paying for this app each year, so the recurring cost each year will be maybe a few thousand dollars more than what we're paying for the app, so.
Basically, the ballpark.
How much?
Thirty.
Thirty.
But really, what you're getting compared to what we have now will work, will work the difference too, so.
All right. Audio enhancement system. We've been looking at this for a number of years, I think the first time I saw it, and the first time some of you who were on the board at that saw, at that time saw it, was at the GSBA conference a few years back. Newton County did a demonstration of audio enhancement, and we were there together, several of us, and sat through the demonstration, so when we built the Nichols school, we had an opportunity to, to infuse this system into the Nichols school, and it's worked out really well, uh, there, and y'all, most of y'all, I think, have seen it used over Nichols, and so with these renovations at the high school, we've got the opportunity to include this as the bell system and the intercom system, so we're redoing the bell and intercom system anyways, so we'll use audio enhancement. so we'll use audio enhancement and their system to do the bell and intercom, as well as the cameras and the audio. You see the, the number there, six hundred and eight thousand, will install the entire system, uh, field.
Some of what we spoke to at the conference while we were going over, just kinda reviewing this, mentioned some might be E-rate eligible, so.
Uh, our, our plan was not to use E-rate, uh, but we're gonna use ESPOS funding that we have dedicated towards renovations at the high school.
I was, I was curious as to why he thought it would be E-rate eligible, so I didn't.
Some of the cabling might be, that's been done as part of the, the general contract at the high school. We, we know we've got a maker switch replacement coming up next, E-rate sockets, so we'll try to control our budget for that, that's a big purchase.
The, uh, this is a sole source purchase, there's not a system that is identical to what audio enhancement, uh, does, so we would be purchasing this under a sole source, uh, letter. It's really a continuation of the Nichols implementation, uh, so we're asking the board to approve the purchase of the audio enhancement system. I did include a video as part of this to give you an idea, in case you're not real clear on what the system does, but there will be a, uh, video camera in every classroom at the high school, and there will also be an audio system where when the teacher talks, they're wearing this lanyard, and it projects their voice throughout the classrooms, and the teacher doesn't have to strain their voice. And that was how this company got started, was because, uh, the owners, I think they had a child who was hearing impaired or whatnot, or had some problems, and so this whole thing was developed a- as part of, for the audio piece, but it's expanded into the video and other parts of the classroom, so.
Can you pull that video up?
Every team in high school uses film to help them coach. I say that because, you know, coaching is teaching, and there's really no difference between coaches and teachers.
In a world where pressure to succeed goes beyond test scores.
The results showed that not only did we improve, we improved almost four times the rate of the improvement in the state.
Where administrators and teachers alike are seeking new ways to improve the classroom learning experience.
I come to work every day because of my students, uh, and so when I see the way that this system can help them, uh, I'm all.
There is a new path to classroom and professional development that's changing the way teachers view their craft.
It's great to actually visually see what happened during the day, and see areas that I can improve and strengthen.
Introducing ViewPath, a powerful tool for recording, storing, and sharing lessons, but that's just the beginning.
It's really starting to transform what education is all about. It really is about empowering people to be learners and self-starters and lifelong learners.
ViewPath, a simple-to-use, permanently-installed classroom camera system, accessed and controlled by the teacher.
They can increase their ability, shore up their skills, and that can only increase student achievement.
ViewPath, see it at audioenhancement.com.
The results that we've had at Nichols have been really positive, uh, they've done a lot of really good work at Nichols, but I do think it's interesting that they're in their second year in the new school with this system, and I'm pretty sure they had the highest achievement on CCRPI this past year, so I'm not saying that audio enhancement necessarily contributed that, because I know the teachers and, and all of them out there did a lot of really good work to make that happen, but, uh, it hadn't hurt anything, uh.
We've been, if I could, we've been real impressed with the company since we've been at Nichols, um, they have improved their systems, they rely on two or three other third-party vendors for servers and software, and they have since integrated all of that, so they've developed every part of that system internally now, so they can support it. They've upgraded the intercom system, if you haven't seen the intercom at Nichols, um, next time you're over that way, check it out, it's, um, the receptionist has a touchscreen monitor with a map of the school, they need to call her in, they just press that room on the map, that opens up the intercom connection, cuts off the audio in the classrooms, you don't have repeated sounds, it's just a nice way of communicating, as well as the, the classroom piece.
And it, it will be their bell and their, their intercom system also, and, uh, so it's a big purchase, but it is, uh, it fits in line with our budget for the high school renovations. We, uh, when we originally estimated, or had a, a, a budget, our budget meeting last year, uh, we talked about the budget for the high school renovations would be seven million, eight hundred sixty-nine thousand, one hundred thirty-five dollars, uh. The total was what we've done at the high school, the letting of the bid for construction out there, and the audio enhancement and the parking lot resurfacing that we've done, we will still be one million, four hundred and four thousand, ninety-eight dollars below what we had budgeted to start with, so, I know six hundred and eight seems like a big number, it is a big number, but, uh, it's within the budget that we had prepared to do this work at the high school.
Well, the part I like to say is your bell and the intercom system that we're gonna have to do anyway, that's a pretty big chunk of that, but I've been impressed with that system since I first saw it, I'd love to have it in every school, obviously it's cost prohibitive, but as we do things like we're doing at the high school, I'd like to see it integrated everywhere we can. Uh, I, I think it brings a lot to the table, it's called audio enhancement, it's, like I said, that's the way they start it, it takes a lot of stress off your teachers and all, but it's also got a lot of security features, it's also got a lot of, you know, features academically, where they can, you know, record their lessons when a kid is out sick, or maybe needs to review something, he's just not, can go back and get on his, you know, laptop and watch it again, I mean, there's just so many things about that system that are beneficial, uh, you know, I'd love to have it in every school yet.
Yes, sir. We've talked at high school, we talked at freshman camps, including at high school? No, this is just for the high school where we're doing these renovations, but we can certainly get a, a, an estimate.
What are we doing at freshman campuses?
We're currently working on getting the bathrooms.
I'm talking about security, like we do.
Oh, we're gonna install this Integix system at the ninth grade academy too, so we will have the Integix there, uh.
And we will be putting new cameras in, in the near future, security cameras at all schools that don't have the network cameras, and they've got old analog cameras over there, so we'll be replacing all of them.
And we just reconfigured the front office there, we put in the glass, and so that's gotta be keyed in at the ninth grade now to get in, and so we're doing other things to secure the campuses.
We're not, we're not doing the audio enhancement system.
We don't have a proposal for that tonight, but we can certainly go back and, and get a, get a quote on it, because I, I, I would like to see us eventually, as Mr. Lot said, have this on our other campuses, uh, so.
Can you go, I mean, I don't wanna jump too far ahead, but, but if you're gonna get a quote for one campus, and I know we've got, you know, we were able to get the splosh passed, and I don't know whether other state funding might be available in the future on security, but go ahead and just ask them to quote all the, all our campuses. So, I mean, I, if they're gonna come down to do one, might as well stay all day.
Yeah.
They quote from a map.
Okay, beat away, but, 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 they might as well just go ahead and, and do the work, um.
One potential concern, Mr. Spox is not here now, one potential concern at freshman campuses is gonna be power, so we're really tapped out on power right now, the, the projectors are powered off the air conditioning, uh, power supplies, the disconnect boxes on the outside, so I know there's some issues, plug one or two more devices, and most of the classrooms over there, it's gonna trip a break, so that's, that's one thing we may have to look at, at that campus, be careful.
They have to fix all that first, eh?
Yes.
Well, we'll work on looking at other sites, and look at all of them, I, I think that's certain.
See what it's gonna take to address his concerns about the power, but it'll be good for you.
Yeah, uh, that will have to be addressed, so.
Good figure, Hamster, will you? Yes, sir.
All right, uh, audio enhancement, if it pleases the board, we'll have this on the agenda, we're gonna have it as a separate item, I thought the audio enhancement tax out and crisis alert were large enough purchases to break them out, but then separately, not as part of the consent agenda. Tax allocation, district, we included this on the agenda just to, uh, to talk about with the board. I know that there are some decisions that are gonna have to be made concerning, uh, the agreement that is executed between the city and the county and the school board. There has been talk that maybe there is some new planning going on with the county and the city, and that, that possibly some changes to the arrangement that we had discussed over the last few weeks. So until we hear anything officially from the city or county on those potential changes, it may be premature to do too much other than just general discussion, which we're having right now about TAD. The exciting part is this property around us will be developed, uh, beyond just the car wash and the parties that we have beside us, so, uh, anyways, uh, any other thoughts about the TAD and the, uh, planning that's going on?
Well, I, I, the only one I've got is they, I know they went back and, uh, at least on the map, on the redevelopment plan, they pulled the car wash off, but not in the left, not in the, not in the words, and lawyers like that way like that.
I sent, I sent, I talked with the city administrator about that, and I sent him a message today to, uh, to change that.
It may not mean anything in the future if they work out what they're working out, but.
Yes, sir.
Look, if they don't work anything out, and they go forward with this proposal, with that amendment or adjustment, all verbiage anyway, um, I guess, put it this way, if they work something out on how the city and the county decide to finance their portion, it doesn't require any action on our part.
From what I understand, the intergovernmental agreement that will set all that in stone, and that's what'll actually set it in stone, from what I understand, not necessarily that the, the document that we've been reviewing, is that intergovernmental agreement that, that you will have to sign and agree to, sign off on, so that'll be what enforces everything, is that true, Council?
Right, which jurisdictions participate to get the car wash is a done part of the, the plan, but, yeah, the, uh, this thing just kinda gonna be pushed back as far as the schedule.
Yes, sir.
So we're just sitting waiting until the city and county figure out what their intention is?
Yes, sir. The good part is for us, we're not really, uh, having to put any funding into, to play on this, uh, we'll see what they come up with.
All right.
Regardless of what they come up with, it'll still require us.
Approval.
Approval, we'll do a call, a call meeting, depending on how long it takes, how far it goes.
It could be official, actually, but they can do one without the school board, but if they do one without the school board, school board gets its share of the TAD roar taxes. So, I mean, you're.
Well, tell them to go ahead.
Sir?
Tell them to go ahead.
That, that agreement is where you will, uh, agree.
Or not.
Sir?
You said or not.
Or not.
They have to honor the school board's wishes on that too, all right, so.
Well, I'm not getting any hints, I'm expressing this, the, all the vote did earlier was allow in Douglas a TAD.
Right.
Nothing to do with this TAD, and so then having vote, the legislature put it on and said, okay, the people in Douglas voted for, people in Douglas voted to have it, uh, have the possibility of having a TAD, and then they've developed a plan, and then the, the school board and the city and the county will vote whether they're gonna participate. And that, that will be a formal meeting.
They could move forward without us.
You could have a TAD that would have just the city.
Yes, the city.
You know, one just, yeah, the county would, would make sense, but they could, that would have, yeah.
All right, uh, at this time, we've got, uh, Mr. Logan Evans with us tonight, and, and our curriculum folks, and, uh, at the school level, and, and, uh, teachers, so they've been doing a lot of work on assessment, blueprinting, and when this term was brought to me, I, I had to pause and ask exactly what assessment blueprinting is, I've heard curriculum mapping over the years, I've heard curriculum design, I've heard, uh, you know, all of the terminology that's used to describe the instructional program, but the assessment blueprinting was somewhat new term for me, and so I've, uh, spent a lot of time with our folks talking about Ms. Miller, and, uh, Dr. Tucker, and, and, uh, meetings with principals, it's been discussed, so I felt like we needed to update the board on some of this work that's going on too, in case you hear about it out in the, the system or the community, you'll have some understanding about the work that's going on too. So we've got Logan Evans here tonight to update us on assessment blueprinting that's going on in the system.
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Lee, thank you for the time here in front of the board, I've got a handout, and if you notice that, that top line there in parentheses, uh, what we're gonna be talking about is top quality assessment feedback at all locations for every student at any level, so we're using eliminate data assessment as our assessment system, we collect tons of data, uh, to date, we've had approximately a million assessments done by students in the system. We have over twenty-five million data points from those assessments, and the number keeps growing all the time, so, uh, we're, what we're talking about tonight, though, is how we can do better with that data stream, uh, when you think about a data stream, we have computers everywhere, and we have people inputting information into it all the time. So what can we do to help us understand our impact on student achievement, and how can we grow and support those students, and, and grow a stronger community through that? Uh, so improving our, our data-driven culture is where we want to be, so, uh, blueprinting is a common practice that all professional assessment companies do. Uh, it's just a normal part of the process, uh, what it allows you to do is set up studies to understand your validity and reliability of assessments, if that assessment's of quality, and it can predict what's gonna happen, and understand what the student really learned, uh, and what they do is come up with a common language and tag that system in the computer, and that sets up all the data that allow, it's allowing to understand what's been collected, uh, it sets up for all your visualizations, and lets you have a deep comparison to any other data source, so that's kinda the language of the, uh, of the machine there, so I've developed a theory of action to go along with it, if you notice in the background, it's the familiar diagram of the whole child, so if we're focused on the whole child, and want to improve, or want continuous academic growth, and we adhere to research-based best practice, and continue to adapt and improve all various students' course, then emphasizing valid and reliable assessment, timely, timely actionable and detailed feedback's gonna lead to better educational outcomes, and further, it's gonna help us be adaptive and agile when change is needed. And so we've got a, an opportunity to set us up, not only for right now, but going into the future, so we know an education change is always coming up, and so we can help, help lead that change. Okay, uh, brought in this slide for the strategic plan, the, the process, it, it hits multiple points in the strategic plan, um, so it has a lot to do with mainly in the area of teaching and learning, but there's also some connections to other areas that's, of the strategic plan, um, okay? Uh, mission and vision here, I, if you notice, the word equitable is circled, and so we're creating a stronger community through an equitable and excellent education for every student, so put equity front and center for a moment, so if you think about our elementary enrollment, and how students move around the school system, there's eight elementaries, lively dispersed, we've got clusters across CMS, we've got three high school locations, and then we're moving to academies, um, how do you have a common quality of assessment across all of those locations, no matter where you go, no matter who the teachers are, or the administrators, and so what we can help set up through assessment, and this is, of course, is just one part of the whole system. of the whole system, but how can we ensure that same quality anywhere you go? Okay, we also have this system focus, probably sets out this vision of leadership teams and PLCs, standards-based classrooms, and high-quality formative assessment to achieve excellence. This falls right in line with our system focus. And what we have in illuminate is a way to understand our milestone data in a way that we haven't really had exactly before. What this, once we load the data to illuminate, we can drill down through this chart and understand performance all the way through. But one of the, one of the kind of issues with milestones is they, they hold a lot of that data close to them. So it's not super specific. There is some drill downs, but mainly this milestone is autopsy data. There's not a ton you can do with it right now. Okay, and for any assessment illuminate, you can break it down by performance bands. So the kids in green did the best, the kids in red did the worst, but what do you really know? I mean, we can know who did what, but can't we be more specific? Well, you can, you can look at the standards view, but a standard, they're notorious for being vague, raw, complex language. Turns out the standards might not even be written in a way students can understand, and that's what they're supposed to be able to learn. You know, students don't necessarily read at the Excel when the standard's written. So if you have a vague, broad standard that's very complicated, you might want to get a little more detail. So here's what we need. So first off, illuminate, complicated program. So if we drop everything on a calendar where you have one quick access for your whole year in assessment reporting, this will be very helpful for any administrative team, so you can outline it, but it requires that you use the system and understand how to work the calendar. Okay, assessment meta data, this is how the machine organizes data. So what we need to do is to be exact in how we align our assessments. I've got this chart at the bottom from Advanced Ed. We also did something very similar with the DOE when we did the SLO process. This is something they do with milestones. But this is, if you imagine doing this on paper, every assessment item would be tagged a certain way all the way across this chart, so then you could add up, quantify, summarize the data, and then make connections. So I presented this to plenty of teachers and they look at it, and generally the veteran teachers are the ones who speak up and say, eh, it's just not real, this, you know, this looks like a lot of work for every assessment. That's true. But when we have a data system, you can kind of skip the paper and go right into the computer. So I mean, I want you to think about this fence analogy, this came from some research I was doing. Larry Ainsworth has the building of fence analogy. If you think about a curriculum, think about like building a, building a fence, where the vertical posts, those are the standards, and then between the posts, you tile that together with learning targets. So what we can do is take a, take another deep look at our standards and outline learning targets and key skills that help us meet those standards. So if we clearly state what the students should learn and have a clear, common language that can be understood by the teacher, students, and parents, and then we can assess and provide a formative use, we can make something out of that assessment and act on it, then learning targets are the common language that we share, the skills required to match with the standards. So we tile that together, we have a much better idea of what the curriculum's going to do, and, and that's just to be very purposeful. One way we can do that is to, and we've done this in the past, which is unpack standards. So you take the standard and then you, you basically read it very deeply and closely and, and then unwrap it. So if you look at the chart on the right, we've got this blue circle, that's the standard, write an effective research paper. Well, what targets are in there? Where you have to search, find information, write coherent, the, the resources, and further break that down. Those are key skills in little gray circles. And so this is the common language that we can derive out of a standard and use across assessments, across a performance-based assessment, across schools, classrooms, content areas. And so what you do by breaking that standard down is create this common language that we can all work with. Okay, once you have that common language, you can add it to illuminate what they call questionnaire data. So you can tag assessment items, anything you like. It could be a, a website for a review activity, it could be a com, just a word that's a skill. For example, you see up there, there's a 10x. Well, in fourth grade, that's multiplying by 10, powers of 10. But you can also see rounding to a thousand's or two-by-two multiplication, adding decimals. That's that common language I'm talking about, that's easily understandable by a student, by a parent, by a teacher, and it's a way we can commonly align assessments together. And this is work that we've actually been doing right now. So we have a growing list of our common vocabulary that we can then apply to any assessment. This is an ever-growing business, it keeps expanding. I'm kind of interested to see where it comes or where it leads to. And notice we also have alignment to the domain level. So at the very top of the list, you'll see operations and algebra thinking. Well, that's a domain of the milestone. And then you see the DOE unit one. There's also content that aligns to the state curriculum maps. So we can align every item to all these levels, to state-level documentation, to local guiding documents, to key skills and abilities that students should have. So this alignment works all the way, all the way through the system. Okay, once you have that, now you can, like I said before, you can set up your study. So here's how we looked at our benchmarks. We looked at it across school, by state unit, and by domain. And then we're able to quantify it. Did we align our benchmarks the same way that we align, that the state aligns their assessment? And so there's, might be some value in assessing in the same weights and percentages that the state does it. You know, if you spend 10% of the time on the state test and operations and algebra thinking, over the course of the semester or the year, you might want to spend a similar amount of time. That tells you the priority of that. And so we can then calculate, quantify what we've done over a whole semester or any sort of time there. Okay, here's another example, so leading into the PLC. What's the purpose of the PLC? Is it to get together and crunch numbers, or is it to get together and make decisions based on that? So if we take the number crunching out of it, how much more time would a staff have to talk about ways that can fix instruction, guide instruction? If you look at this chart, we see that all the way to the right, patterns of numbers is the best performance on that, on that assessment. And so that's great. We know that we've got 75% of kids that can do that sort of work. And if you look at it in opposite view, 25% can't. That's one of the easiest things. So now you can design an intervention to help students who don't understand patterns and numbers, and then you can find who they are. All right, this new chart becomes available, so what this can allow teachers to do is flex group, which is differentiating for individual student needs. So the little red bar there, those kids who have problems in, in those certain areas. So now we, we take the test, we break it down, they know they might or might not have the standard, we can identify the kids who don't know how to round to a hundred. We can identify the kids having problems with powers of 10, patterns of numbers. So all that data sits right there. All right, going a little bit further, you know, you talk about what students do and that student self-efficacy is of high impact, but you have to be able to give students data in a way they understand. So after the assessment, this data is immediately available to the student in their own portal. And so they can log in, and because we have a common language that's easy to understand, the student can look at the red and say, you know what, I don't really know expanded form. If that expanded form is searched, they'll find videos and other remediation resources available all over the web. The teacher can also put in videos for that specific target, so they say, I'm in the red, I need to watch this video. Seems easy enough. Okay, got home books everywhere, here's all the time, they can access it at home, on the phone, the parent can log in and help them with it. So there's a, a lot of impact that this could have. So this, you know, as soon as the assessment's done, you have this instant information for feedback and remediation or acceleration. Okay, this is key to the whole process, so illuminate was kind enough to build a, a super report, so to speak. So if you look at this, it's a, it's called the multiple assessment percent correct by standard questionnaire. I'd like to say I was responsible for getting them to build this report, but it actually came out of another district. They said, we need a report that shows us everything we did all year, and this is what they came up with. So as long as you're tagging all of your items and all of your assessments the right way, you can look across the road. So look at student A. What does student A need to work on? Round them to 10s. Okay, what about student C? They have a problem with addition, but they've got rounding to 10s, seems odd. Look at student J. Where can we get the most bang for the buck there? So what you see is, once you have this data, every student has a row and you can understand what they need. So every teacher has every one of these students. You have the ones that have a trouble in everything, and then the ones who make 100, and the ones who make a 95. So how do you tailor and fine-tune instruction for what every student needs? If you look at this the different way, from top to bottom, you can see what the teacher had trouble with. So what subjects did the teacher maybe have a little trouble with trying to get across to the student? Addition, rounding to 10s. So here's one chart that shows you what every student needs, and then maybe what the teacher needs to reflect on and improve upon. And if you have that for an entire school or an entire district, you can isolate teachers who need support in that area and teachers who might be able to provide it if you connect them. Okay, so now if you take this all together, we've got another great report. So this helps us understand our CCRPI content mastery. Over on the bottom left, there's a chart, if you notice in the pink there, those are the students who are at risk at following level, say from a four to a three, a three to a two. So we can identify those kids right off the bat. If we then have this information, we know the kids who are at risk and what they need to work on. Those kids in pink, they might only be two questions away from the next level. And the ones in dark blue to the right, they're one or two questions away from the next level up. So again, if we know they're a couple of questions away from the next level, up or down, and we have the information to help them, and they have the resources that we've been providing all year, surely that'd make a difference. If their goal is to increase and, and do better through accountability and do better by the student, it just seems, seems like it makes sense. Have a highlighted button over there, there's a show-off. So I've been to schools over the past where you have a data dig day, where they bring teachers in, they pull up a big data file, and they just dig through it and crunch numbers, man, they're working, getting on it. Well, this one is the instant data dig. You just click that button and all the data pops out. Bring it out to Excel and sort it, it arranges all the kids in order, shows you what they're, where they're sitting, and then you click back and you look at the skills they need to work on, domains they're having trouble with, and all that matches up. What you've done is dissected the milestone to help you understand where your school needs to work on and what skills and topics all the way through the next semester. So by using this process, we might be able to dissect, decipher our curriculum compared to the state assessment, the state data and metrics, and understand how to continually improve at a faster rate. So, you know, just think about it, I know it's a lot of work. I worked, Kim Miller, we sat down, this is blueprint, and, you know, it can be kind of challenging, you know, and you can have a lot of conversation, but you have to realize it's a continuous improvement cycle, you know, the work's not really ever done. But if we continue to work on this along and along, it's just going to improve that process altogether. So I really, really hope we can do more of it. We have instances of blueprinting at every campus, all the way from K through 12. There's, there's examples of this throughout the school system, and my goal is to grow this into a, to a full initiative, that we have forethought and do this on a routine basis, and really put the, the data in the hands of the people we need the most to continue to improve. So that's assessment blueprint. If you have any questions you might have, I know there's a lot of technical information and jargon in there that, I'd be happy to walk back to it.
We had just as information for the board, the state is doing something, they're calling the assessment pilot, and they've got, I think, around 35 systems that are doing something called NAVI that's been sponsored through the University of Georgia and a couple of school systems got together and created this NAVI system. They're piloting that, and then there's some other school systems, about 20 school systems that are piloting, what's the other program?
NWA Georgia MAP.
The MAP. And so those systems, formally, they petitioned the state to be able to do that. The state said, oh, they're in system, they want to do the pilot. Those were the two choices. We talked about doing the pilot, but we didn't see any need to because the quality of work that's going on here in our, our county with Ms. Miller and, and Mr. Evans and the work with the schools that's going on, we didn't want to get involved with something else when we've got such quality work going on in our schools and our buildings with the work that they're doing. So we like to think that, that our work is just as good as what they're doing with those pilots. And we did talk with Fulton County, they're also using illuminate.
They are.
About maybe partnering with them and, and trying to be a third pilot, but that never really came through.
Yeah, it's kind of deadlines and whatnot, but I've, I've since continued to kind of lobby some individuals higher up in the state about how, you know, the work in illuminate could take the place of everything else they're doing. So for $10 million, everybody can have it. So my goal, I'm working with the governor's office right now on the Spanish program, and this is the work I'm, I'm presenting as my capstone. So, you know, with luck, I'll be able to present the same presentation to the governor, talk to him about it. So, you know, we'll see what happens with that. But, you know, just going a little further, one of the people I've met in that program is the Georgia Cyber Captain, she's an assistant principal for ELA. They're the largest high school in the state. They've got 10,000 students, it's all virtual. I presented this to their team of, of ELA teachers, they immediately picked it up and then started sharing that information across their high school, and they immediately started working on it and have already had great things to say about it and how it's going to help improve their educational outcomes as well. So it's a, it's a quality, quality system, it's a quality bit of information. We only hope it'll grow and get better.
Thank you, Logan. Appreciate it. Audience participation and executive session. I would ask the board that we move to an executive session to discuss personnel and the personnel list, and that is what I would move, ask the board to move to an executive session, with personnel.
We have a motion to move to executive session.
I move, we, uh, move to executive session.
Second. As a favor.